Okay, let's just do a quick review before we do anything on the clickers. Everyone know how it works? Are we set to do a practice or no?
Yes.
Okay, so with the clickers. Sorry. Okay, with the clickers. Oh, can we kill the music? Thank you. I was liking it, sorry. Can we go to the screen on the computer? Ah, there we go. How to use a clicker. So one or an A is a yes vote, a two is a no vote. Look for the green light. So it's the last time, the last thing you hit. So if you hit multiple times, it's the last number you hit. Great. So if you hit the wrong number first, you can always do it. It's the last number you hit is what's going to go up there. Okay? And do we have a sample question? All right. It's a great night for a town meeting. Go ahead and vote. One for yes, two for no. And you see the timer on the top? That's how long you have to vote, everybody. Well, I'm glad the majority think it's a great night for a town meeting. All right, welcome, everybody. We do have a few people in the overflow, but we will not. I've spoken with them, and they do not need their own moderator. So Max, you get the time off. If anything changes, I'll call you in. All right, first I'd like to bring up Dave Roach.
Thanks, John, and thanks for all you folks coming in tonight. We really appreciate it. We have a lot of people to thank. I want to start off by thanking all of our elected officials.
Can we just give him a little more volume for Dave?
Is that better? Okay, good. Start again. Thank you all for coming out on this night. Some of you didn't want to, apparently, but most of you did, and we appreciate you coming out. I want to thank our town employees. We'll start off with thanking them. Want to also thank our elected officials, our appointed board members, and our committee members. There are a few individuals I'd also like to thank, starting off with our selectmen, our administrative assistant, Mary Ellen Demming. Mary Ellen? Mary Ellen has been with us for 32 years and has decided she wants to go back to gardening. So we wish her the best of luck, and we're going to miss her. Also at the head table, we have our town attorney, Joel Bard, who has been with us for many, many years from KP Law. He has guided us down the path, successfully guided us down the path, for many years, and we appreciate his input. So let's thank Joel Bard. A lot of you are here for the first time tonight, and we appreciate that. As I look out into the audience, I see a lot of people my age, with a few exceptions, one of which is my grandson, Jack O'Brien. Jack, stand up. Come on. Jack is a senior here at Lennox, and he's exercising his right and privilege of his first town meeting and his first vote. Great, thank you, Jack. So I'd also like to thank my board. Couldn't do it without them. We have the greatest board, Mary Beth Mitz, Ed Lane, Neil Maximilian, and I want to say a special thanks for a gentleman who's not here tonight but has served the town well for the past nine years, Warren Archie. Thank you. All that being said, I'd like to introduce the person that holds us all together and keeps this town running, Chris Ketchin.
Mr. Moderator, Christopher Ketchin, 388 Hughes, Tonic Street, the town manager. Dr. Billups, if we could throw up the presentation. For the 77 of you who are evidently not as happy as I am to be here, I'll try to make this as short as possible because I know we have a lot of business to get through. So, welcome to town meeting. We're thankful for you as voters to come to what is a very unique style of governance known mostly only to New England, where you act not only as voters but as legislators. We're thankful for your presence, and we appreciate your time, and we will try to be respectful of that throughout this evening. So, the purpose of this presentation is usually to provide an introduction to the budget. This year, I'm happy to report that the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, as well as the Finance Committee are all in unison when it comes to its support for the various budgets of the town. That is also the case with our Community Preservation Committee and their various project and reservation proposals that we have for you tonight. Total budget of the town is $32.9 million. Will require a tax levy increase of 4.48%, while higher than in typical years is still remaining to beat the rate of inflation. Again, the budget fully funds the budget request of the Lennox Public Schools while also making significant capital and infrastructure investments for the town. The next two charts are ostensibly rather simple. It's where does the money come from? In Lennox, bulk of our revenue comes from the taxation of real and personal property, about $17.8 million in this proposed budget or 54% of local revenue. The other major revenue sources include primarily enterprise receipts. Those are receipts from user charges on your water and wastewater bills, state aid, $3.8 million or roughly 11%, 12% of the budget revenue, and local revenue, which most notably includes motor vehicle excise, ambulance fees, and the lodging tax, as well as the meals tax. Where does the money go? In Lennox, about just under half of the total revenues are applied towards our Lennox Public Schools, both Morris and LMMHS. Larger expenditure categories include public safety, just under 9%, general government at approximately 10%, public works and enterprise funds, and numerous other departments that make Lennox a great place to live rounding out the various funding categories that you'll be asked to make appropriations to those departments later this evening. So, the special act that creates our form of government requires me to provide an estimate six months in advance of when the property tax rate is actually set. While I don't have a crystal ball as an order of magnitude and also to comply with the special act, I present this slide for you to show the demographic or the fiscal breakdown of the tax profile, if you will, of the town. So the total property valuation for the town Lennox in the current fiscal year, that's FY '23, is $1.72 billion, that's billion with a B, dollars. Property tax levy that we're proposing for FY '24 is going to be $17.8 million. That is a 4.48% levy increase from the current fiscal year. That's said with an asterisk. So, if we're forced to assume that the relative value of commercial, industrial, personal property does not change relative to residential value, which are both taxed at different rates, and the growth in revenue remains constant, we will be looking at an increase in the residential tax rate from $9.16 to $9.57. And then on the commercial side, $13.03 to $13.61. Do I think that is likely? Absolutely not. And the reason is because values always grow. When I made this presentation last year, I presented a higher tax rate using the same formula that I've just laid before you, and values grew by double digits. And so tax rate actually went down in that case. So I present this because I have to. The law requires me to present it to you, but take it with a grain of salt. The most salient point here is the average single-family home tax increase, which is estimated under this probably at $236. That's on an average single-family home valued at roughly $576,000 or generating a tax bill of $5,510. Some good news. The out-year projection that I presented last year showed out-year increases in the seven, almost eight, percent range, and just in the last year, the out-years are looking, you know, more in the four to five percent range. So we've seen some improvement already, and we will continue to work to bring a more salable number to you when we come for FY '25 this time next year. Reporting on the reserve positions of the town, this is always my favorite, free cash, which is not free, and it's not cash. Ten years I've been making that joke, and for ten years, you've always been gracious enough to laugh. I appreciate that. Better way to describe it would be the current available general fund balance, available for appropriations to fund the town departments. That number currently sits at just under $3.5 million. We certified $4.8 million as of July 1st last year. However, we did do about $1.4 million in appropriations at a special town meeting in December. So that's the tally on free cash. We also have a general stabilization fund of roughly three-quarters of a million dollars, a fire and rescue apparatus fund of about the same amount, our ambulance replacement fund, which we'll be looking to deplete tonight under an article on the warrant for an ambulance is just over $100,000. Our other post-employment benefits, trust. This is unique to Lennox in a lot of respects. You will see communities in Berkshire County that have a larger percentage of their unfunded liability for retired employee health insurance covered with their trust, however, does not take into account their school employees because most of them are in regional school districts. Lennox's does. So we've been working for the last 10 years or so to build up this trust. It is invested in the Public Retirement Investment Trust at the state. You've appropriated every year, and this year will be no exception, to a trust that currently has a balance of $7.5 million. These are funds that we will use one day to pay the liabilities that are currently accruing for the health insurance benefits of our existing employees, rather than continuing to fund the pay-as-you-go costs, which is what most places do and which will eventually overtake them. So, retained earnings, also a reserve source in the water fund, $1.1 million. Wastewater retained earnings, just over $100,000. And excess levy capacity, this is the amount of money that the town could tax without requesting a voter-approved proposition two-and-a-half override. About 10 years ago, this number was a mid-five-figure number, and because of everyone's hard work and fiscal discipline, this is now a mid-seven-figure number. So congratulations to that for all of the hard work that's gone into putting more money in, or leaving more money in your bank account and, you know, less in the town's treasury. And finally, just a brief budget overview for some of the articles that you'll be voting on tonight. Article two, that's the omnibus operating budget article for the non-school town departments. Article three is the tax impact portion of the Lennox Public School budget, which this year, unlike last year, enjoys the support of not only the school committee but also the select board and the finance committee. Articles four and five are for the water and wastewater enterprise fund to fund our operations on water and sewer provisions, and the general fund debt service, which will be supporting bonded capital projects, is being funded with cash on hand. And one of the highlights this year, if you look at the capital, the omnibus capital article later on, we are committing significant resources to capital funding to maintain our equipment and infrastructure. So with that, I hope I haven't taken up too much of your time, and I do appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thanks for the, hello? Thanks for that, Chris. All right, before we get going, just a few housekeeping rules. All right, so tonight, there's going to be a two-minute limit on speakers, so anytime you come up, two minutes. There's going to be probably a lot of speaking going on, so please, if someone's already made the point, let's try not to repeat points, let's try to make new points. If you are a non-resident, you'd like to speak, you can address us, let us know who you are, and then at least 10 people here will have to be able to say yes and allow it to happen. Okay? Again, if you want to speak, there's a microphone in front right here. We ask that you come and get in a line, and no one speaks until I address you, and when you do speak, you need to let us know your name and your address and where you're at. All right, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I get started, Article one, I'd like to, I'd just like to say that Chris Ketchin is a guy that is self-deprecating, and I don't know what the hell we'd do without him. He has the full support of the Board of Selectmen. We are certainly lucky. Okay, moving along. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to waive the reading of the warrant and return service thereof and to authorize the moderator pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, to declare a two-thirds vote on voice votes if he deems to do so.
Is there a second? Explanation?
All in favor?
Explanation? Explanation, you want to tell them what it is? Explain why? All right, are there any questions with that? Can we just call? Yeah, go ahead and explain it, Dave. So all it is is some of the weights and measures, things that are pointed by the town manager, someone who goes out, make sure that when you're getting gas, that you're actually getting a gallon when you get a gallon, that's one. The two-thirds vote, so if I, we do a voice vote, and it's a majority of two-thirds, I can call it by ear. If someone does not agree with my call, you can call me out on it, and then if enough people, if we get people here who agree with you, then we can go to the clicker vote. But most likely, we'll go to the clicker vote if it's close at all anyways. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Okay, here we go. This is my 12th year of doing this, so bear with me. Nobody else wants it.
Before you do this, do we want to talk about the hold? So, this is the budget.
Go ahead.
So when we're doing the budget now, then we do this a little different. As Dave goes down, he'll read each line. So as he reads the line, if you have something that you'd like to talk about, just yell out "hold," I will mark it down, and then we'll go back and address each of those individually in the discussion period. Does everyone understand? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the treasury money for the operating expenses of the town for fiscal year 2024 as follows, or any sum and further to provide said appropriation, transfer the sum of $579,000 from free cash, so-called, as certified on July 1st, 2022. Now I'm going to go through the individual accounts, and as John said, if you want to put a hold on one, please signify by saying "hold." First one is administrative and finance, $350,707. Town clerk, $87,574. Town treasurer-collector, $154,138. Compensation reserve, $70,000. Operations support, $101,018. Elections and registration, $17,075. Economic development and advertising, $128,625. Town debt and interest, $279,000. Audit reserve account, $862,766. Insurance and bonds, OPEB, $831,597. Land use department, $537,132. Town building, $97,761. General government subtotal, $3,517,393. Police department, $1483,084. I'm sorry, $1,483,084. Fire department, $738,417. Emergency management, $36,605. Ambulance squad, $599,660. Public safety subtotal, $2857,766. Vocational education, $196,220. Education subtotal, $196,220. Highway department, $776,786. Snow and ice, $257,005. Cemetery, $33,097. Public work subtotal, $166,888. Board of Health, $220,849. Veteran services, $30,372. Human service subtotal, $251,221. Lennox Library, $462,216. Community Center, $466,361. Cultural council grants, $5,000. Cultural district, $7,500. Academy Building, $7,866. Historical commission, $25,950. Celebrations, $2,200. Cultural and recreation subtotal, $977,093. Our total, $8866,581. Thank you.
Is there a second? Discussion? Okay, all in favor of the budget of Article two? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Now I can say thank you.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,540,921 for the operating expenses of the school department for fiscal 2024.
Is there a second? Can, first of all, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, Bob Vaughn, 10 Post Road, Lennox. Sorry. I'd like to thank Select Board Chair David Roach and the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ketchin, Town Manager, Mr. Minch, Town Moderator, for allowing me to make this presentation tonight. I speak on behalf of the school committee, Megan, Veronica, Christine, Bob, Dave, and Orrin. I wish to thank Christine Morrow and Bob Munch for their two terms of service plus on the committee on behalf of our children. I want to recognize some employees who have retired or who are retiring this year. Beth Gray and Jonathan Cade here at LMMHS, Associate Studies and Music Teachers, for two decades. Administrative assistants here, Elaine Lovato, who's been here for 25 years, and Karen Zincha for 19 years. And paraprofessional Gina Bueno at Morris. They've supported our students and staff through the years in so many ways, and will be greatly missed for their dedication to our children and contributions to our schools. I'd also like to thank our teachers, support staff, and administration, especially our interim superintendent, Dr. Jake Eberwine, and assistant superintendent Melissa Falkowski for the outstanding education provided to our students. Dr. Eberwine stepped in in December and has been exemplary in stabilizing the leadership, his preparation for meetings, communicating with the school community, dealing with difficult situations, and doing far more than being a placeholder while waiting for Dr. William Collins to join us in June. Thank you so much, Jake. The school department portion of the budget is always significant. You've seen the chart showing that we're about 45% of the town budget. We've always received great support from you, the voters and citizens of Lennox, and we hope for the same this year, but we never take it for granted. We're asking for an increase of 4.33% for our operating budget, as well as all health insurance benefits. Budget work has been in progress since early November and was the subject of five extensive public school committee meetings, as well as the budget hearing in March. Committee members met with the town finance committee and are grateful for their support, as well as that of the select board. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, we're voting on Article three. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Hold on for one second, sir.
You don't get to leave. I'm going to be quick, I promise, and I won't make too many jokes.
That would be a surprise.
So, what Bob didn't tell you is that he is stepping down from his role in leading our wonderful school committee for the past 13 years, and before that, since 1983, he tells me, being the wonderful principal, some of you actually inherit voting, he might have been your principal, and some of you certainly grew up with his kids and knew his family, and he has been a wonderful leader. His work has been tireless. He will be the humble person who says he's not perfect, and none of us are, but his perfection and caring and advocating for the children of Lennox goes without question. And so I want to thank, I'm going to miss him, but he's going to give us all the stats he knows, like all the votes for the last 40 years, so I know where you are, Bob, and I want to publicly thank Bob for his dedication to.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator, Article four, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriation to fund the fiscal year 2024 budget for the sewer department. Sewer operations, $1,747. Debt service, $771,687. Capital expenditures, $220,000, for a grand total of $1,999,157. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following source of revenue and available funds. User charges, $1,881,531. Retained earnings of $117,626, for a total of $1,999,157.
Is there a second? Okay, Ed, who are you?
Well, as we say.
Who are you? Introduce yourself. You didn't introduce you.
I'm sorry. Ed Lane. We got to get that down. So, you know, the only explanation I have for this, it's to run the sewer department, and it's, we said before, it's fully funded through the user charges. There's no. no town money, no, no general fund money that goes into this.
Okay, we're voting on Article Four. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Do we need to introduce ourselves?
No, you don't, you're done now.
Okay, good.
Article Five, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year 2024 budget for the water department. Water operations, seven hundred and thirty-nine, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Debt service, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and capital expenditures, forty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, for a total of one million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, one million, four hundred and eighty-eight, one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Retained earnings, forty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, for a total of one million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Is there a second?
A second's okay.
Okay.
Again, fully funded by the water department and the users.
Okay, this is Article Five. All, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if we can do this right. Neil Maxmullion, Cliffwood Street. Article Six, Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter Ninety of the general laws. To pay for such costs is allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of townways and bridges, or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Is there a second? Explanation.
Briefly, each year, the governor's office allocates Chapter Ninety funds to all the towns across the Commonwealth for bridge repair, road repair, et cetera. I think the number this year, we, we usually vote to say yes to accepting it before we actually know the number, but I think the number is something in the two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar mark.
Okay, this is Article Six. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Moderator, Article Seven. I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or otherwise provide the sum of one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, or any other sum for the following capital expenditures. Highway department, five hundred and thirty-two thousand. Town clerk expenditures, ten thousand. School department expenditures, four hundred thousand. Fire department expenditures, fifty thousand. Police department expenditures, twenty-five thousand. Analyst EMS expenditures, twelve thousand. Community center expenditures, five hundred thousand. Library expenditures, thirty thousand. And further, to provide for said appropriations to transfer from pre-cash as certified on July first, 2022, sum of one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Is there a second?
A second.
Explanation.
As Chris explained in his slide presentation, there's a pretty aggressive expenditure of capital expenditures. These are not in the operating budgets of the various items you see here, one through eight, but these are to address capital needs. For example, you know, road issues, the school department has a roof to fix, a playground to replace, the community center has, to replace the elevator, the ceiling in the ballroom, so there are expenditures such as that.
Okay, we're voting on Article Seven. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Eight.
You got me for a couple more here. This is on behalf of the CBC, so, Mr. Moderator, Article Eight, I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2024, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation, or take any other action in relation thereto. And then I'll move on to, yeah, the sponsor's in the wrong spot in this thing, so I'll move on to describe the expenditures. The CPA fiscal year 24 funding recommendations are as follows. Under the category of historic preservation, a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the Mount, annual library debt service of a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, and for the Lennox Library, three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two. Under the CP category, community housing, to the Lennox Affordable Housing Trust, fifty thousand, and administrative expenses, sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine, for total expenditure of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six.
Can you do the reserves as well?
Yes, so, in addition, there's reserves, which are ten percent of annual revenues. For historic preservation, there's thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen and seventy dollars. For community housing, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen and seventy dollars. And for open space and recreation, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents.
Is there a second?
A second.
Explanation.
Each year, as a town that participates in CPA funds from the state, the Community Preservation Committee hears and reviews applications for funding. This year, they agreed to help the Mount purchase what is known as the farmhouse on the Mount property. The a hundred and seventeen dollars, as you know, since the town took over the library, is to pay for the debt service of ownership of the library, and there's a small expenditure of three thousand dollars for the library to preserve some historic treasures. The Affordable Housing Trust asked for money to help build their fund that goes to unrestricted use of, or their housing reserve, that's the fifty thousand you see there, also the sixteen thousand dollars in unrestricted.
Okay, we're voting on Article Eight. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, this one's much.
Nick Carey's.
This one's much more simple, and Article Nine, also sponsored by the CPC, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation unrestricted fund balance to the CPC Historic Preservation Fund, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Is there a second? Explanation.
This is a simple accounting measure. The purchase of the Mount property that's identified in Article Eight is under historic preservation, so they are moving from the unrestricted balance to the historic preservation balance.
Okay, we're voting on Article Nine. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mary Beth Metz, Dunmore Court. Mr. Moderator, I'm presenting Article Ten. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be placed into the fire engine stabilization account. And further, to provide for said appropriation, transfer the sum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from free cash, so-called, as certified on July first, 2022.
Explanation.
If we set aside a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars now, and in successive years, when it comes time to buy our new fire engine, we'll have the money.
Okay, we are voting on Article Ten. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new ambulance, equipment, and other related costs, and further, to provide for said appropriation, transfer the sum of one hundred, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents from the ambulance stabilization account, and a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents from free cash, so-called, as certified July first, 2022.
Explanation.
So, we need a new ambulance, and the thing is that we have to anticipate two years out when we order it, so we're appropriating the money, sending them a check, and we're ordering our ambulance, which should be here in two years.
Okay, this is Article Eleven. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Tom Delasco, Twelve Hillside Drive, Planning Board Chair. And if the folks in the AV shack could just leave the, the presentation up the whole time, I'd appreciate it, not switch back and forth to the, the crowd. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section 10.3 Wireless Telecommunications Over District, Overlay District, and replacing it with a new section, 8.18 Personal Wireless Services Facilities, as set out in a handout available at town meeting, in substantially the same form as discussed at the Planning Board Public Hearing on April 4, 2023, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Is there a second? Explanation.
The proposed zoning bylaw presented before you tonight is largely the same as was presented to you in December. In the last several months, the planning board reviewed the bylaw and through input from our consultant, town council, and several citizens made a few minor changes, which we believe has made the bylaw even better. Town Council Joel Bard, who is present this evening, has revered our bylaw and assured us that it is complete and very sound. On behalf of my fellow Planning Board members, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for all of the support and patience that has been shown as this bylaw has developed, including from caring citizens, town council, consultants, town staff, and the Board of Selectmen. Your planning board takes its responsibilities and service to this town very seriously, and we thank you for the trust you have put in us. For tonight's presentation, you have two handouts. Printed on white paper is a complete copy of the bylaw in its final form. On blue paper, there is a fact sheet and FAQ. These will be useful for you to refer to during the forthcoming discussion. Okay, to start, everybody needs to know the rules, what the FCC allows and doesn't allow. State and local government must allow for, for personal wireless services facilities to be built. State and local government is empowered to regulate the placement of personal wireless facilities through zoning bylaws, but we cannot discriminate against, among providers, we cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service, and we cannot regulate placement or construction of personal wireless facilities, towers and antennas, on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. Basically, this means we can't say, we've got great AT&amp;T coverage in the center of town, so everybody should switch over. We can't use excessive setbacks or outright prohibitions that zone out places where wireless infrastructure could go, and we're limited to restrictions based on physical safety, falling towers, for example, and aesthetics. No siting decisions can be based on RF emissions. We need a new bylaw. The current bylaw, designed as an overlay district, designates five properties grouped together along the Route Seven and Twenty corridor. These are near the existing cell tower up behind Lennox Fit. Because that area has coverage, those five parcels are rendered useless. Since the overlay district doesn't designate any other properties, it effectively prohibits any new wireless infrastructure, which violates federal law. The resulting poor and/or lack of service experienced by many throughout town jeopardizes public safety, economic well-being, and convenience. Lennox is vulnerable to a developer seeking a variance from the bylaw, or taking the town to court. Either way, this jeopardizes the town's ability to make its own siting decisions, and risks a developer forcing wireless facilities where we don't want them. For example, our current situation means that places like the Curtis could have a wireless facility placed on the building. The new bylaw creates the opportunity for better, more dependable cell service throughout Lennox. It requires special permit application and review by the Zoning Board of Appeals. It emphasizes the placement of infrastructure as far from residential property lines as possible. It prohibits any wireless facilities from being placed on buildings like the Curtis, Turnier Terrace, or Schoolhouse Apartments. It restores local control over wireless facility siting through a defined use table, determination of need process, qualitative and quantitative review criteria, detailed setbacks, and detailed design and application criteria. Everyone wants to know where new towers and antennas could go. This question, however, has a complicated answer. It's difficult to guess where a cell provider would want to place a tower or antenna. The planning board decided not to designate an overlay district of selected sites for the simple fact that the current overlay district clearly doesn't work, and we're not wireless network designers. New towers would be prohibited in the dense commercial C, R-15, and R-30 zoning districts. As mentioned previously, antennas would be prohibited on places like the Curtis. Mapping was done to gauge different setbacks. The conclusion was that a minimum setback for new towers greater than two, new towers greater than two-hundred-and-fifty feet from property lines would be too restrictive. The word "minimum" is key. If a developer wanted to build a tower on a property where a setback greater than two-hundred-and-fifty feet would still provide coverage, then the zoning board could certainly require it. The same holds true for placing an antenna on a non-residential structure. These restrictions push possible wireless infrastructure to the less dense, more open parts of town, and still provide workable options for siting. Why not stick with our existing bylaw? A no vote on the proposed bylaw would mean that poor and unreliable cell service in town would remain the same for now. Since the town would be in violation of federal law, this leaves us vulnerable to developers forcing sites for wireless infrastructure in places where they prefer, potentially placing antennas on places like the Curtis. Any neighborhood in town would be fair game to the placement of wireless infrastructure. The reasons for voting yes on Article Twelve are simple. The proposed zoning bylaw provides an opportunity to expand cell service in town. It spells out siting and design criteria. It sets out a rigorous Zoning Board of Appeals process. It ensures that residents and abutting homeowners have a voice in the process, and it provides protection to residents of the Curtis, Turnier Terrace, and Lennox Schoolhouse Apartments. Thank you.
Okay, so now, as we have some lines here at the mics, remember, two-minute limit, and try not to repeat so we can keep this all moving. And we'll start on this side, and don't forget, introduce yourself, where you're from, or your address, and then you can begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Diane Sheldon, and I live at thirty-two Old Stockbridge Road in Lennox. I've been involved in this issue for over two years, and have attended the meetings on this topic, and advocated for the very best bylaw that offers Lennox excellent connection with a protection of our town that our town deserves. Let me read you two statements, and ask yourself, which one do you want for your home, for yourself? Number one, the purpose is to protect the town's scenic, historic, natural, and other resources while providing for adequate personal wireless service facilities and towers to be developed in the town of Lennox, while also preserving property values and locating towers so that they do not have negative impacts such as visual blight, nuisance, noise, towers so that they do not have negative impacts such as visual blight, nuisance, noise, and falling objects on the general safety, welfare, and quality of life of the community. Number two, the purpose of the proposed bylaw is to establish general requirements for the locating of personal wireless service facilities, including without limitations, towers, antennas, ground equipment, and related accessory structures. Which one do you want? The first one is what Lennox has now. It prioritizes your property values. It prioritizes your general safety, your welfare, and your quality of life. The second bylaw prioritizes rolling out towers without limitation. Is this what you really want? To give up your documented protections that are written and codified in the existing bylaw? I'm not quite finished, and I have a warrant that I'm going to prove. So I ask for a few more moments.
Guys, 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 just wrap it up, please, right now.
I will do this as quickly as I can. We're not voting on better coverage. If that was in the warrant, we could all agree. We're voting on a bylaw which is a set of instructions or decisions and values that our town has in determining where towers go. Tonight's bylaw has been stripped of its protections, and we are asking you to vote no. Okay?
Now we gotta turn it over. Next person, please.
I have to present this.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
Your time is up.
Yes, I do.
Ma'am.
If you want to pass a bylaw tonight...
Now, this is what the two-minute is. You need to get off the line now. Next person up, please.
My name is Karen Beckwith, and I live at 14 Old Stockbridge Road.
I hear her.
Speak into the mic.
No, she was.
My name is Karen Beckwith, and I live at 14 Old Stockbridge Road. I want to come tonight to vote for the new bylaw, so everyone has adequate cellphone coverage, but I can't until we increase the proposed setbacks from 250 feet for towers and poles, and 100 feet for colocations. We measured those two distances from our quarter-acre property, and it's too close. Looking into it, it will spoil the view from the road of our homes, our curb appeal, disastrously injuring our curb appeal, in the eyes of any incoming prospective buyers. It will also spoil the views from our homes. We're not the only ones thinking about this. We found credible surveys and studies from within the professional real estate, legal, appraisal, government organizations, including HUD, all analyzing the real estate market to clarify what happens to home values in proximity to wireless installations. Reporting on these surveys and studies can be found in reputable trade and consumer press, including the National Association of Realtors, Realtor Magazine, The Appraisal Journal, National Business Post, The New York Real Estate Journal, The Wall Street Journal, The New York Times, and the list goes on, all describing ultimately that when given a choice, buyers don't want to live near cell installations of any kind, and they will avoid purchasing houses near them. Homes near cellular installations sell for substantially less money, documented from 10% up to 45% less than homes not near a cell tower or a colocation heavily laden with antennas. For most of Lennox, that could amount to a couple hundred thousand dollars. I have an amendment to the bylaw that I would like to propose Article 1886B. I move to amend the motion under the above article as follows. Setbacks. For towers to 500 feet, for colocation to 200 feet. 500 feet is considered a modest setback in the Berkshires. Many towns have 500 and 600-foot setbacks from residential property lines. I'd like to make a motion to amend the setbacks in the bylaw, so that I can vote for the bylaw. To 500 feet from a residential property line for towers and poles, colocation at 200 feet from 100 feet. And I've typed it all up.
Okay, there is a motion for an amendment on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moderator?
There's two halves? Hold on for a second.
So, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request that I confer with the rest of the Planning Board members on this amendment, and possibly make a recommendation to the voters whether or not we agree with this.
Okay, so this is... No, excuse me. This is my meeting, not yours. Okay? All right. So, this is gonna be something unique. This is a unique... Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Do they get two minutes, too?
Excuse me. So, this is also an open meeting for the Planning Board in case something like this happens. So, we made time for them to be able to have a public meeting right here to discuss your amendment, to make a recommendation to this. This is all part of it, just so that you can get their opinion, and you're all welcome to listen in. They will have a microphone as they were speaking at their meeting, and they're going to do that now. So, we're gonna give the Planning Board a second to discuss your amendment, and then they'll make a recommendation to the board. Then, we will discuss the amendment first, and then go back to the article after that.
Thank you. So, this is the amendment that's been proposed?
Yeah.
I think these are copies. I can't see it. No. It's discussing changing... Wait a minute. Yeah, it's all in red. I think so. So, they want it... No, I think the amendment was to increase the setback from 250 feet to 500 feet without exception.
Guys, everyone wants to hear what they're saying, so if you can please be quiet so we can hear.
Ms. Beckwith, if I could... Mr. Moderator, could I address her directly?
Sure.
So, the only proposed amendments are what's in red in this?
Yeah, that's the only change.
Okay.
I tried to make it easy. We have two different documents here.
I thought I understood it as one amendment.
It's one amendment, but it's not two different sheets of paper.
Right. But what it says here is without exception, so there's no...
You can go over and explain it to them if you want.
There's no ability to reduce, waiver to reduce the setback.
My name is Pam Keber. I'm on the Planning Board. I would not recommend this amendment for the very specific reason that if we go to setbacks like this, we will not be able to get coverage in Lennox that we need. This is what's called the effective prohibition. The Planning Board, as part of our lengthy process to come up with this bylaw, is very, very, you know, detail-oriented, we mapped setbacks. Our goal was to, like, have a setback that was as far from residential properties as we could get for you, but still be able to provide for some service. We mapped setbacks at 100 feet, 250 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, 1,640 feet. And then, we looked at all those maps to see what was left, if you kind of block out all those distances. And, we all agreed, I think it was unanimous, that in order to allow for service, we needed to stick with the 250-foot setback that would allow enough parcels dotted throughout town to enable us to get a cell tower. Now, that said, the bylaw also is very definitive in requiring the ZBA to work with applicants to ensure that any proposals for any towers in any locations are as far from any residential places, any homes, property lines, not just the house, the property line, as possible. So, there are gonna be, like, big eyes on ensuring that any proposals keep these things as far away from homes as possible. The same thing, the same idea applies for the second 200-foot thing. If we had 200-foot setbacks for antennas on a building, which are the least, like, the most innocuous, on non-residential building, we will not have any coverage in the Village or in Lenoxdale. We will not be able to put any antennas in those places. So, this is an effective prohibition of service. We did the hard work to come up with the recommendation, so I could not recommend this bylaw.
So, this amendment, so, okay, I'll take a motion just from the Planning Board members, whether or not to recommend this to the voters.
But I do want to say that if we start pulling on the threads, we've worked really hard to put together something that takes care of not running into the effective prohibition area, but also trying to be very protective of properties, and also allow, as Tom showed in that first Basic Rules of FCC slide, to be able to have places where we could put these things, or otherwise, we're out of compliance, and then we're just sidelined on decision-making. So, my motion would be that we not recommend the amendment that has just been placed on the floor, because it starts to pull all the threads out of a very strategic kind of tapestry that we've tried to create.
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tom Delasco, aye. Of not recommending. Right.
We need the other half, too. Need the other half, the sheet, whoever has it. He's only got one half. Missing one half. Okay, you just want to present what you guys just said? I think everyone heard it, but you can just repeat it if you want.
So, after the discussion, the Planning Board recommends the town meeting not to adopt the amendment.
Okay, now, our discussion now is going to be just on the amendment. So, if you're up here to speak on the motion, step back and let some other people come up who want to speak solely on the amendment. This is just a discussion on the amendment, then we will vote on the amendment, then we will move forward after that. Is this on the amendment?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Elaine Calagery, and I live at One Morgan Manor. I'm asking residents to vote no on this bylaw, because it does not do what the Planning Board says it does.
Is this on the amendment? Ma'am, we're only talking about the amendment, not the bylaw, just the amendment.
Okay.
The setbacks.
This is just on the amendment.
Okay. Okay. Good cell service should not be the cost of your home values.
Ma'am, you're not understanding. Just take a step back. Is anyone here to discuss the amendment? I know you are. Anyone here to discuss on the amendment?
Nope, I'm... Sorry.
Yes, here we go.
Hi, Jim Harwood, 34 Walker Street, also a member of the Planning Board. A lot of thought was put into these setbacks, and we certainly started at a large number and worked our way down to the minimum, the largest number that would still allow coverage. And, if we thought that a 200-foot setback and a 500-foot setback would accomplish our goals, which is a complicated goal, serving two different interests, we would have recommended it. And it will not. It'll leave us vulnerable, because it'll prohibit service. So, please vote against it.
Okay, is anyone else here to speak on the amendment? You can come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Elaine Calagery at One Morgan Manor, and I want to vote for the 500-foot amendment.
This is a...
Who are you?
Phil Gilardi, Pine Hill Road, Lennox. You give the people two minutes to talk, but these people have a lot more than two minutes to talk. Can this issue be tabled until the next town meeting, until... Hey, wait a minute. It's important, okay? Because a lot of people want to be heard. This is a big thing. I like the increase in setback, because it makes a lot of sense. But I think the Planning Board is very set on doing things just the way they want to do it, and they think they're right. I think it needs some more time.
Needs more time.
Anyone else to discuss the amendment? The amendment?
My name is Catherine Levin. I'm from Scientific Alliance for Education in Sheffield.
Are you a Lennox voter?
No, I'm not, so I will need 10 to vouch for me.
Yes.
All right. Would anyone like to vouch for... I need hands up. I only see a few.
I see more than 10.
Okay, there you go.
So, a couple of things about the amendment. First of all, it's important to have, distance is your friend when it comes to wireless radiation. And, although it is a good thing to increase the setbacks, I'm going to say that it's not enough. And what you really have to look at with cell towers is vertical, horizontal, and signal strength. That's what determines the frequency and the damage. Tom likes to look at his watch whenever I talk. And, the important thing is, in Sheffield and in Great Barrington, they actually voted out any small cell millimeter wave 5G, because they know it's not safe. So, that is a different type of frequency, but when you put things closer to people, if the power output is not reduced, then it's harmful. It's even thousands of times more harmful. I would actually like to see a motion that would be to have, you can have all your places that you want, but make the signal strength between minus 125 decibel-miliwatts to minus 85 decibel-miliwatts, which is well-known for everybody to get five bars on a phone call. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else to discuss the amendment? Step up to the mic here. We'll go over here first. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Scott Barrow, 14 Old Stockbridge Road. And my question is, actually, it's part of this, in that basically what started this ball rolling had to do with the special permits, because your 250 or 500, whatever setback you've got, goes away completely if you've got one and a half times the height of a tower. So, I came over today with a meter, actually, it's something used when we're playing golf, to find out how far the pin is. But basically, the distance from that corner up there where you've got gray and beige wood together, and to this spot over here where the American flag is, is together, and to this spot over here where the American flag is, is just about 96 feet, or close to 100 feet, which is kind of what we're looking at for some of the, what happens when you've got a special permit based on the size of a tower. So if you had a 50-foot tower going up, and it got a special permit, you could end up with 75 feet, as opposed to 100 feet, or whatever. So is there any kind of a, is there a position somewhere in between that we could come to that would keep the special permits from being so drastically close to places where our set, you know, where our setbacks are giving us a feeling that we're protected that way?
Could I address that, Mr. Moderator? Because it's some inaccurate information. So first of all, every application for this has to have a special permit. A special permit does not automatically buy you a reduced setback. A reduced setback could only take place if the cell provider proves to the zoning board that they need that reduced setback in order to make the service work. Now, the plant, the zoning board could allow that only by a supermajority vote, and there's criteria in the bylaw that the applicant has to meet. And it would also, it's also in there ideally to push a cell tower further away from residential areas. If there's a large parcel where that reduction in setback could push the tower further away from residences, then that's better.
So I'll need 10 people to vouch for me. My name is Courtney Gilardi. I own a home on East Street in Lennox. Thank you. So I want to support the amendment to have 500-foot setbacks. I'm one of the 17 people who lost my health and home when a cell tower went up 400 feet next to me.
Keep talking about this setbacks, please.
Yes. So what I am saying is, I have neighbors who are sick at greater distances than that. What Chair Dalasco just said is absolutely right about the waiver and the variance process. If a tower company comes in and says, "We would like to have it less," then they have to show the need for it. Attorney Robert Berg, who was invited to write amendments to the bylaw, spoke and prepared a letter saying, "I recommend at least 500-foot setbacks." And then if the tower company can show a need to make it closer, then they can. There is a safety valve in there for the tower companies, and that is the waiver and the variance process. Our federal attorneys who reviewed the bylaw are all in support. Now, Pittsfield has 43,000 people, and it is densely populated. We found, when we went through this process in Pittsfield, that 1,640 feet away from any residential structure left 10% of land to site towers, which was not an effective prohibition. I am sure that Lennox can find additional land to make those 500-feet setbacks and provide excellent coverage for everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make comment on the amendment? Okay, so right now we're going to vote on the amendment to change the setbacks. Okay? This is just on the amendment.
Would you repeat it, please, sir?
The amendment?
So everyone's clear?
Okay. All right. Where is it? So the amendment is to, you want to do this one, Tom? Because I cannot.
The proposed amendment, I believe, is to increase the setback for co-locations from 100 feet to 200 feet, but without exception. And the other, the other amendment was to increase the setbacks for towers from 250 feet to 500 feet, again, without exception. So no, so no ability to reduce that setback.
So you're voting only on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It carries. It fails, sorry.
Can we do a clicker vote? Excuse me. They were louder than the first group. I'm sure the first group-
The nays were much louder.
Can you go to clicker?
Would you like to challenge that call?
Clicker.
Can she challenge? She's not a voter.
We have Lennox residents challenging the vote.
You want to challenge the vote?
Asking it to go to a clicker, please.
This is a majority vote, folks, it's not a two-thirds vote, so you know. No, but another gentleman who is a resident did challenge the vote. So would you guys like to challenge the vote? We'll do it by clicker. So I'll go to the clicker.
Yes.
Okay, going to the clicker. Are we ready? We're voting on the amendment, solely on the amendment, to increase the setbacks. Okay? A one is a yes vote on the amendment only. A two is a no vote on the amendment only. Go ahead. Again, no, this is a no. It did not carry. Can you go to the back of the line, please, so we can have residents first? You can still get a chance to speak, but not right now.
If I had known that I couldn't, then I wouldn't have spoken on that.
You can go ahead. You still can speak, but you're going to go to the back of the line, and we're going to have residents come up first. All right, now we're back to speaking on the motion. Okay? Can I get your name?
I can't reach, hold on, please.
We know that. We're going to give her a chance to speak. Get to the microphone.
We need to allow her to vote.
I understand that. I understand that. I'm going to let her get to the microphone to her mouth first, before we do that. She's going to say who she is, and then we're going to see if everyone will allow her to speak.
Thank you. My name is Amelia Gilardi. I live and go to school in Lennox, and I'd like permission to speak, please.
Okay, would anyone like to allow her to speak? Okay, here you go, Amelia, you're awesome.
Hi, I used to live in Pittsfield, and I was forced out of my home because of getting sick from the RF radiation from a cell tower. I have a medical diagnosis of harm. My condition is recognized under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and just this morning I testified in the Massachusetts State House to the Joint Committee on Public Health on a wireless harm registry bill that will document those who have been harmed from cell towers. There were so many injured people signed up to testify, they had to have a second session. For doctors and nurses, there is an EMF electromagnetic field medical conference that offers continuing education. Our Massachusetts Boards of Health designate cell tower exposure an emerging health issue, and there is a chapter written on it in the Third Legal Handbook for Massachusetts Boards of Health stating that we need to reduce exposure. I am the human evidence of harm, and my medical diagnosis is not up for debate, but the bylaw is. And the bylaw cannot take your health into consideration, which is why it needs to be done right so Lennox does not end up with a situation like Pittsfield, Centerville, Sacramento, Ripton, or anywhere else where there is documented and recognized cluster of environmentally induced illness from RF exposure. Reinstating the original statement can be done tonight. I came to Lennox because it was safe, and I don't have radio frequency radiation making me and my little sister sick. Our Pittsfield Board of Health has been working towards solutions for us. Our community has generously donated land and money to support medical and legal expenses for the 17 harmed. I speak because I lost my health and my home in the last three years of my childhood to this. I want you all to have the service you need, but also the protections you deserve. Please vote no to have a better bylaw that ensures what happened to me and the kids in my neighborhood won't happen to you and your loved ones. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had a lot of non-residents speaking, so we're going to get just residents to speak now for a little bit more. Just residents, only residents for right now. You want to start right here? And then we'll move back to non-residents after that, but let's get a bunch of residents. We have had a plethora of non-residents speaking.
I'm a resident.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher O'Brien, Holmes Road, Fire Chief for the Town of Lennox. Over the years of service to the town, I've been part of many changes in fire, in the fire and EMS profession. From turnout gear we wear, the apparatus that we drive, station needs, and how we communicate, just to name a few. While all needs are important, there is one that is critical to response times, and that is the ability to communicate. We have entered a time where telephone lines are considered archaic, and the use of cellphones is common practice for many. This is true for fire and EMS. Having the ability to talk directly to a caller in distress, or ping the cell phone they have to obtain coordinates to locate the individual, whether they're in Kennedy Park, October Mountain, or another location in town, or even out of town, has proven time and again to be a very useful tool. Some other uses of wireless communication that I've come across are, most new construction has gone wireless for their fire and security alarm systems. Weather alerts, code red, amber alerts, come through a cellular service. And having the ability to contact medical control directly to administer life-saving medications while in the field. The list goes on and on. Unfortunately, not all locations in Lennox, and Lennox, they all have coverage, which is very concerning to me personally and professionally. The need for wireless communications is at an all-time high for businesses, venues, tourism, and the safety of the community. I would like to thank the members of the planning board for their countless hours of volunteer work they have put into this bylaw. The patience and professionalism they have portrayed has been extraordinary. I offer my support for this article, and thank all of you for your time.
Hi, Elaine Calagery, One Morgan Manor. We are not voting on better coverage. If that was on the warrant, we could all agree. We are voting on a bylaw, which is a set of instructions, decisions, and values that our town has in determining where both 150-foot macro towers and 5G small cells can go. Tonight's bylaw has been stripped of its protections, and we are asking you to vote no until some of those protections can be restored. The town will tell you some of this in there elsewhere, but it in, in a very watered-down way. You invested a lot of money and time into your beautiful homes. You deserve to have them protected. To that end, I make a motion to amend the bylaw by reinstating the original purpose statement of the bylaw. If you want a bylaw to pass tonight with any chance of it protecting the values and quality of life that brought you here to Lennox, please pass the amendment as the first step in making this better, more durable, and protective by law you deserve.
I'm not sure that there was a motion there. I mean, an amendment there.
Yes, she made the motion.
This is the-
I make a motion to amend.
Hold on, so you, you made a motion, I'm just trying to figure out what that emotion was, because I don't understand it. This is that way, so can you tell me what the, can you go over this motion? Before I get a second, I got to know what the motion is.
To reinstate the purpose of the bylaw. To reinstate the purpose of the personal wireless service facilities zoning bylaw.
That's not what this says.
To revert to the original purpose.
I'm not sure I got any of this.
Diane read two statements. One is the existing one, and one is the proposed one. At the hearing, everyone up here agreed we should move to the original.
You can't speak right now, ma'am.
I'm helping to clarify.
So can, just to clarify, yeah, just to clarify, you're saying that you want to revert to this, back to the, everything that's written on here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to go back to the purpose of personal wireless service facilities zoning bylaw is to protect the town scenic, historic, what was read earlier in the speech, natural resources, while providing for adequate personal wireless service facilities and towers to be developed in the town. And two, one, provide standards and requirements for regulations, placement, construction, monitoring, design, modification, and removal of personal wireless service facilities and towers. Two, to provide a procedural basis for action within a reasonable period of time to request for authorization to place, construct, operate, or modify personal wireless service facilities and towers. Preserve property values is three. Four, locate towers so that they do not have negative impacts, such as, but not limited to, visual blight, attractive nuisances, noise, and following objects on the general safety, welfare, and quality of life of the community. Five, require owners of personal wireless service, service facilities and towers to configure them so as, to minimize and mitigate the adverse visual impact of the facilities and towers. And six, require the clustering, sharing, and camouflaging of personal wireless service facilities and towers. That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, again.
Mr. Moderator, if I may.
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is, hello, Tess? So this, the purpose of what's being amended is to return to the purpose of the original overlay district bylaw.
Thank you, Tom.
What we did in creating the new bylaws, we took a lot of those points, valid points that are in the purpose, and moved them actually into the body of the bylaw, where they actually have more teeth. The section about not have undue adverse impacts on historic resources, scenic views, residential property values, or natural or man-made resources, has actually been moved into the qualitative criteria part of the, of the proposed bylaw. All the other, most all the other points that were in the original purpose have been moved into the body of the bylaw, which gives them more, more weight. The bylaw has more teeth in the, in the body of the bylaw than in the, than in the purpose statement. So much of that information is actually in the new bylaw.
So, your motion, in your motion, did you say you want to replace the purpose section in this bylaw with this purpose section? That's what you're asking to replace? Your motion is to replace the purpose section that is currently in the bylaw with the purpose section that I just read? Okay. The discussion now is strictly on the amendment. Again, so if you're not going to talk on the amendment, please step back, and you still need to go to the end of the line for me. You're speaking on the amendment only.
What does it hurt to reinforce, if everything that she says in the original statement is in the original, is in the new bylaw? What does it hurt to reinforce it and put it right up front so that it's clear? I don't see where, I don't see where it hurts anything. I think it helps something, and it clarifies it. I vote for it.
Anyone else have a comment on the amendment?
I have a question. Tom, you said that, that many of the original intent for this, Karen Beckwith, Old Stockbridge Road. So is there anything that was in the original purpose statement from the old bylaw that is not in the new bylaw, the new proposed bylaw? Is there any aspect of that that's missing?
I'm pretty sure that there's not. I don't have it in front of me right now, so, but I'm pretty sure that the majority of all those points in the original purpose are now in the new bylaw. They're dispersed throughout the new bylaw, where it actually has more teeth.
Yeah, I think. Don't hit me, Tom. Can we ask Joel Bard if there's a reason that this would somehow compromise the language of what we've put together? Yeah, or conflict.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Bard, Town Council, I'm afraid I can't- I'm afraid I can't answer that question. It's reinstating is actually still in place, but it's looking to replace one purpose statement from another. There is a purpose statement in the proposed bylaw that's six par, six clauses long. As the Chair of the Planning Board said, there is language throughout that addresses many of these same points. I'm afraid I can't make a point-by-point comparison, so I'm afraid I can't answer that question.
Okay, so then I would suggest, as a resident at 34 Walker Street and a member of the Planning Board, that since this would create some uncertainty in a well-thought-out and crafted bylaw, that I suggest we vote against it.
Okay, again, commenting on the amendment only.
I called a question.
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
Okay.
My name is Courtney Gilardi.
Now, he called the question, and you need to...
But you asked if anybody had a comment on the amendment.
Ma'am, ma'am, do you not, you need to listen, all right? First of all, the question was just called. That is not, so, so there's no discussion going on here. Okay, so you got to stop talking until you are allowed to talk by me. You can't talk until that time, so please. So there's a motion on the floor to call a question. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It carries. Question is called. Now we are voting on the amendment. This is strictly on the amendment to change the purpose. Okay? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, amendment fails. Continuing conversation on the motion at hand. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Steve O'Brien, New Lenox Road, and I'm the police chief. First of all, we in the police department completely concur with the fire chief's statements. All that he said can be on the police side of things as well. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that have happened regarding internet service in the town of Lenox. Recently, we've had two instances where we needed to set up a command post and call in outside agencies for assistance, both involving missing persons. One was in Lenox Dale, and the other was in the center of town. In the Lenox Dale incident, we established a command post and learned that where we were located, internet service was non-existent. The agencies were working with absolutely, the agencies we were working with absolutely had to have internet to run the website programs that they used to know what has been searched, what hadn't been searched, and what was next to be searched. To rectify this, we had to take the time to call in another agency to set up a mobile tower at our location. In these investigations, time is of the essence, and thankfully, the portable tower was able to produce enough internet availability to satisfy their needs. In the second instance, most of the same players and equipment were involved, and we found that internet service in the center of town was spotty at best. Actually, many of the police officers commented on how shocked they were that they weren't able to get a good connection. Thankfully, this incident ended fairly quick, quickly after sunrise, and the mobile antenna didn't have to be requested. In each of these instances, this is not a problem that can be solved using our two-way radio systems or equipment that we use, we used to use regularly. These are new issues, and the need to have internet and cellular communications is essential for the police to get things accomplished as quickly as possible. I'd like to thank Tom DeGlasco and the Planning Board for volunteering their time to craft such a robust bylaw that seems to take all things into consideration. The Lenox Police Department is in full support of their work and this bylaw as it is written. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Amy Judd. I live at 6 Main Street. I have two amendments. How would you like me to present them? One at a time?
Make a motion.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to propose an amendment to the bylaw that you require insurance for towers and antennas in case of fire, falling objects, emissions, et cetera. The explanation of it is the Great Barrington...
Hold on for a second.
What?
Hold on for a second before you give an explanation. There's a motion for requirement. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now I'll go with your explanation.
Okay. The Great Barrington Wireless Bylaw asks every applicant for insurance. Under fees and insurance is this wording. Each personal wireless tower or structure or personal wireless service facility shall be insured by the owners against damage to persons or property. The owners shall provide a certificate of insurance to the selectmen's office on an annual basis. Additionally, the towns of Stockbridge, Sheffield, and Lee require bonds for various reasons.
Okay. Do you want to address that?
So a couple of things. The, the new, the proposed bylaw, and I believe the existing bylaw already have cert, sure, surety bonds, or surety bonds for decommissioning of a tower. So that's in the bylaw already. The insurance issue, we don't currently, we don't currently require in a zoning bylaw insurance of applicants for anything else. So why would we do it for this? So normally, companies of this nature, they all have general liability insurance to begin with. So that's pretty much the, the, the reason behind that. The other reason is, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't ask, you know, residential businesses or whatever to, residents and businesses that have fossil-fueled heating, where the heating system meets current emission standards. We don't, we don't ask for insurance for those, against those kind of things.
Many other towns have them.
Okay. Now, again, this is discussion on the amendment only. If you would like to discuss the, on the amendment, please come forward. Go ahead.
I'm Catherine Levin again. I'll need 10 people to vouch for me.
Yep.
Thank you. Just to let you know that Swiss Ray...
...will never finish.
Sorry?
And you residents only will never finish.
We're gonna let her speak right now, and then we'll go on to, we'll decide.
It's just really brief. I just want people to know that Swiss Ray, the top, and all insurance companies identify EMF as a high risk, and they do not cover it. Check it out. Look in their K10s.
Sure will.
We're voting on the amendment. If you're gonna, please get up to the mic, since you want to make a comment.
Gareth Coco, East Street.
Who are you?
Gareth Coco, East Street.
Thank you.
Lenox. My question is, or my retort to your, we don't have anybody else saying we need insurance for putting fossil fuels and the like. You have 150-foot tower, and you also have a special permit specifically for this type of service. So I don't see the issue in saying they must provide insurance for putting that up, because you've already said they're special. So to have something different for them, because I'm not sure how many houses are going to fall over and affect anybody else, that's why I would like to see this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, again, we are voting on the amendment only. Amendment to require insurance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Second amendment?
Yeah, my, okay. The second amendment, I would like, what's happening?
So, before you do that, we have the questions being called.
Before I even say it?
Excuse me. The question's being called for the whole motion, correct? We're calling the question for, this is not debatable. Is there a second for calling the question?
Second.
Okay.
Oh, fuck this.
So, we're calling the question. This is to, if you think you have enough information and are ready to vote on this motion, the whole motion, then you will vote yes to call the question. If you think you'd like to hear more discussion, you will vote no. All in favor of calling the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, it carries. So, we are now going to vote on the motion. Again, we're going to the clickers. So, a one vote, you're voting in favor of the article for the bylaw? Yes, this is on the article. This is on the article. That's what you called the question on.
People in the other room know too?
On Article 12. This is a vote on Article 12. A one, you're voting in favor of Article 12. A two, you're voting against Article 12. Okay? Let me know when we're ready to start. Article 12, all right? A one, is it vote in favor of the article? A two is against. This is a two-thirds majority. Okay, Article 13. Article 13?
Abby, fast, my car!
Is that you? Well, can we get some more volume here?
Jason Berger, Historic District Commission Chair. Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the Lenox... Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the Lenox Historic District bylaw by deleting the existing Section 9.1I and replacing it with a new Section 9.1I. Storm doors and storm windows, screens, window air conditioners.
Okay, explanation?
The Lenox Historic District bylaw initially intended to exempt television antenna from Historic District Commission review. As antenna are now obsolete, TV antenna are now obsolete, the Historic District Commission wants to clarify the bylaw paragraph to avoid any confusion. This amendment will make the installation of antenna in the Historic District subject to review by the Historic District Commission.
Okay, we're voting on Article 13. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It carries. Yes, declare two-thirds. Article 14.
Hello, I'm Sonya Baikovsky, 225 Main Street, Lenox. I'm the Chair of the Lenox Democratic Town Committee, and I'm here to present two articles, starting with number 14. I'm making a minor amendment to the language that I presented to the moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the motion under the, the article to, Article 14 to read...
Right, Sonya, you have to actually move the article first before you can move an amendment.
Okay. I move to see if the town will vote to make permanent authorization that requires both in-person and remote participation in public meetings in perpetuity, perpetuity, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation?
This was an amendment.
You're... Mr. Moderator.
Sorry.
Someone who makes the original motion under an article need not follow the exact wording of the article. It just has to be within the scope. In other words, a minor change is acceptable, and these are minor changes in wording.
Thank you, sir. Shall I reread that, or are we good?
Would you like Sonya to reread it, or is everyone happy with what you heard? Okay, go ahead and reread it, please, Sonya.
Okay. The article and motion is to see if the town will vote to make permanent authorization that requires both in-person and remote participation in public meetings in perpetuity.
And there's a second.
Okay.
Okay, explanation?
So, and again, this is brought forth by the Lenox Town Democratic Committee. In the early days of COVID-19 pandemic, the Massachusetts Legislature acted swiftly to create a broad range of special rules that enabled cities and towns to maintain operations and support residents to safely participate in government. This catalyzed important innovations in municipal operations. Hybrid meetings, conducted simultaneously in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public and via remote access, internet, video, or telephone conferencing, allows a person to view deliberations and allows participation in meeting of a public body in real time. These are now commonplace. Please note, I am discussing meetings, board and committee meetings, not town meetings. The option of remote public meetings has ensured continuity of local operations and provided the additional benefit of increased public access, engagement, and transparency. A remote option allows access for our neighbors who found it difficult or impossible to intend in person to a wide variety, for a wide, wide variety of reasons, including inability to travel, disability, illness, or concern over exposure to illness, conflicts with work schedules, family obligations, et cetera. So, the Lenox Town Democratic Committee seeks to require the current authorizations remain permanent to allow this access while keeping health, safety, and public participation in mind. Our neighbors in Stockbridge recently did the same. And Mass Municipal Association has also requested the state extend these provisions for local officials and are deliberating on legislation regarding remote town meetings in the future. But we all know how long it can take for the state to move on something. So we are asking citizens of Lenox to lead on this important issue by voting yes.
Tom DeGlasco, 12 Hillside Drive. I'm not really opposed to this at all. I'm just wondering as to the legality of it, with the AG's office, you know, allowing, continuing this remote participation aspect of our, our public meetings.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Bard, Town Council. So this is not a bylaw. It's not proposed as a bylaw, so it won't go to the Attorney General. But even had the question not been raised, I told the moderator that I want to alert the meeting that you can vote this, and I personally see no harm in voting it, but it would have no legal effect unless the legislature extends the period of remote, allowing remote and hybrid meetings, as the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, was very active in getting the legislature, only quite recently, to extend the period authorizing remote meetings out two years. So now, state law allows remote and hybrid meetings through March 31, 2025. Until, in my opinion, until that state law is further amended, and I'm not saying it won't be, I think it very well could be, but we don't know, until it's amended, this, if town meeting were to vote this, would not have legal effect. In other words, starting in April 2025, if the law isn't changed, even if this is voted, the town of Lenox would not be able to hold, let's say, this meeting remotely, or, well, actually, forget about that. You can't have open town meetings remotely just yet. But say, planning board or select board meetings and so forth couldn't be held remotely unless there's a change in state law. But just to reiterate, I see no harm in voting this, but it would not take effect until the state law is changed.
Tom Romeo, 54 Reynolds Street. My, my question really is, and it's written in here that it says permit. My, my question really is, and it's written in here that it says permit. My question is in regards to requirement. Um, and that's in regards to, I know sometimes some boards, zoning board in particular, have site visits and stuff like that, and it would seem like it would be almost impossible to, to mandate a remote setting for those types of things. So, just a clarification, I don't think that it would be plausible to do it.
Neil Maximilian, Cliffwood Street. Uh, in my role as select board member, I also, uh, participate as liaison on the, uh, planning board, the permanent building committee, the CPC, school committee, and over the past couple of years that we've tried to navigate this remote participation, the town has tried Microsoft Teams, we've gone back to Zoom, we've tried a hybrid, and I've found it to increase the time and disruption of meetings by at least 50% if not more. So, I think it would be very difficult to implement this, and I also think it would be extraordinarily disruptive to make this a mandatory requirement. Thank you.
Richard Defonzi, up by Knoll Road. Passing this article to me would be a strategic, strategic and administrative nightmare for the town manager, for the select board, for the town clerk, and for the moderator. I look around here and I see, I, I enjoy coming to these, coming to these meetings to see all these wonderful people here at, at two-town meetings every year. Whether you agree or disagree with each other, it's great to see everybody here. I see people here with walking, walking, uh, canes, walking, uh, instruments. I see people here with wheelchairs. If they're able to get here, other people who have less physical disabilities can get here. So, I vote no on this.
Mr. Moderator.
Point, point of, point of clarification, as I said, this does not pertain to town meetings.
I know.
Yeah, state law would not allow that.
Hank?
Hank Maiman, Hubbard Street. I'm also concerned about the—
Closer to the mic.
Sorry. I'm also concerned about the word require. As I read this originally, it permitted, and I think that, um, it would be terrific to be able to do this as often as possible. But to require it makes no sense to me. We've heard one example, um, of, of a situation where it can't happen, so is that going to, and with due respect to the, to council, um, there's, we don't need more arguments about whether the meeting is valid or not because they didn't have, uh, a hybrid component. So, I think if, if the person who has proposed this were willing to go back to the original language, I would be in support of it.
Hi, I'm Dana. I live at 211 Main Street. I just wanted to mention that I'm a mother of two small kids, and my husband couldn't come tonight because he has to stay with the kids. We also have friends that work a day or two in Boston or New York that couldn't be here today. So, with the capability to be remote, we could get more involvement from people who are stakeholders and whose opinion matters.
Just to clarify, though, town meeting would not be part of that.
I'll take what I can get.
I, I see no reason that the, uh, town committee would not have a problem with changing the verbiage back to permit from require. We're, we're fine with that.
You do so—
I move, I can move.
Yeah, there you go.
I move to move, to change the word require back to permit for the motion.
Second.
For the motion on the floor.
So, there's a motion on the floor to amend this, to change it from permit to, uh, to require to permit. So, it was already seconded. Um, so, we're just discussing the amendment. Okay? Are you here to discuss on the amendment, require versus permit, or?
No.
Or on the motion? Okay, there you go. Okay, so, we're voting on the amendment. All right? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment, I just stated, to change the wording from require to permit the way it reads in the original article in your paper. Okay? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Unanimous? Okay, now, we're back to talking on the motion.
Until we build out our cellphone capability.
All right, we're voting on motion 14. Motion 14. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
It carries. Uh, so, motion 15.
I move to see if the town—oh, again, this one's coming from the Lennox Town Democratic Committee. Uh, we move to see if the town will vote a bylaw to codify one—oh, there's verbiage change here, too.
You can change it as long as it stays in the scope, which it does.
To codify one spring town meeting and one fall town meeting effective 9/123 or as soon as legally possible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation.
More than one town meeting in a year is now standard. The select board, I've spoken to the select board. Apparently, they were considering, uh, codifying town meetings before COVID. Um, the town manager and finance committees have expressed that having a fall town meeting is beneficial for budgeting reasons. So, uh, there's a significant difference between, uh, the, the annual town meeting and special town meeting in terms of quorum and petition signature collections. So, the goal of this is to just simply bring those two numbers in line. The general bylaws of the town of Lennox state the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum at an annual town meeting shall be 5% and a special town meeting 1% of the votes cast at the previous state election. While the quorum threshold is far less for a special town meeting, the requirements for citizen petitions is far higher. The requirement for an annual town meeting citizen petition is 10 signatures, while a special town meeting is 100. It makes little sense to us why the quorum threshold, um, would be so much lower and the citizen petition requirement so much higher. So, we seek to have these requirements to be consistent with both town meetings and ask the citizens of Lennox to support it, and by doing so, help support democracy.
Tom Romeo, again, 54, Reynolds Street. Historically, um, and other folks who've been involved with town government know this as well as I do, we had our one annual town meeting, and there was a reluctance to have special town meetings because of certain highly sensitive issues that one could pack the audience, so to speak. I, I'm not opposed to having two, um, annual, or two town meetings. However, I think it should be up to the discretion and the need of the town officials and not requiring it per se. There's no sense requiring a meeting that doesn't really have a need to exist.
Yeah, just a second, we still have it.
Mr. Moderator, my name's Ed Lane, 101 Crystal Street. Also a member of the, the select board, but not speaking for the select board. And, um, I frankly don't see any reason why we should do this, make it, codify it as a, a semi-annual town meeting or whatever, whatever word you want to use. It takes all our flexibility away from us to, because there are some timely things that come up. Sometimes we're not ready for a certain date. I just hate to pigeonhole the town into saying, pick a date. November 2nd would be the day we're gonna have a, another annual town meeting, and we're just not ready for it. So, it really, frankly, I just don't see any reason for it.
Hey, Neil Maximilian, Cliffwood Street, again. Some background on how this kind of became almost a regular occurrence. Probably, uh, I'm gonna guess about eight years ago, I had a conversation with Mr. Ketchin and several other members of the DPW and folks, and said to them, you know, you vote on expenditures to spend at the DPW in spring when, and then you get your money, all the contractors that can do the work have already booked all the work they can do for the summer. So, you get more competitive quotes if you allocated your money in the fall. And it was sort of one of the progenitor reasons for, for doing this. You know, we've got $523,000 that we voted on tonight for the DPW to spend, so, so Billy can get more competitive quotes. So, that's kind of what started this. I don't think it needs to be codified, but there are sometimes legitimate reasons to do it. Thank you.
David Newberg, 140 Plunkett Street, Lennox. I'm a member of the finance committee. I just want to say that, like, sometimes the crunch to get everything done by the, a single meeting makes us work a little harder, and by have, knowing that we always have two to go for might slow things down. So, I'm kind of, it'd be an incentive to avoid a second meeting when we can, although it's not always possible because that DPW meeting you, uh, Neil mentioned. So, I would say that only one other thing is, is it possible that if we did have a special town meeting, that we could have the same thresholds for citizens' petitions and quorums as, as a regular meeting? Is that something you're allowed to do, or special town meetings codified under state law, that it's the, the 100 signatures and the 1% quorum? That's a question, not, uh, not a, not a motion.
Well, I think to partially address your question—
Yeah.
This issue has come up at select board meeting and our regular meetings, and I did research for the last three years that we had both a spring and a fall town meeting, and the, the difference in attendance was less than 100 each year. So, it's, it's not like we only have 40 people and then we have 400 people. I mean, it was like 300, 400, 350, 450, things like that. I know that's not the, you know, all of your question, but in terms of, you know, thresholds, but the numbers are there.
Right. I mean, I guess what I'd like to do is, it seemed like there were two purposes to this motion. One was to equal, for the Democratic Committee was to equalize the treatment of the meetings, but the other one was to force two meetings a year. I'd like to not force two meetings a year, but if we have to, potentially have the same
I don't have the answer.
I didn't know if town council was considering—
Mr. Moderator, Town Council. Um, yes, it is set by state law. So, interestingly, the state law has the lower numbers, as was described, for annual town meetings. So, when you have two, and there are towns that have two, there's always been a question as to whether the lower number applies. We've given the opinion that if you call it an annual town meeting, even though there are two, that the lower numbers apply. Otherwise, the state law, unfortunately to the previous speaker, does set the higher numbers for any special town meeting. The town could, at a future town meeting, look to pass a special act to say that in Lennox, special town meetings can be called with the same numbers as an annual.
So, the answer is we can change it at our, at our, on our, on our own, but not the state sets the rules. Go ahead, Sonya.
I'm still absorbing what I just heard, uh, because that is the goal, what this gentleman did a great job of explaining. Yeah, we just want thresholds to be consistent. So, am I hearing from Town Council, we could codify the words to annual town meetings? And then that would—
Not here, not at this meeting.
I understand.
But at a future meeting—
Yes.
We could do something to, to change the, what we need for, um—
Okay.
—signatures or whatever.
All right. I move to defer to the next town meeting to do so. How's that?
You—
End the suffering.
So, you withdraw on the question? You withdraw on the motion?
We'll, we'll withdraw the motion.
You're tabling it, moving to table?
And end the suffering. Thank you.
It's a motion. All right, so, there's been a motion to table this in the next meeting. Is there a second? I heard a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, and then the next article is just to say, come out and vote on Monday. Right, that's it? All right, that's it. I can, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Okay. Have a great night. We did it under two hours.